Taco stand anywhere in Lakewood, it's a shame that it closed.
Yeah.
I miss it.
They shut down their food truck and everything, didn't they? They just?
I still see the food truck from time to time. I think they still use the restaurant side as a commissary.
The Tijuana Taco just had their restaurant kitchen remodeled. If you have X amount of food trucks, I guess you have to have an actual kitchen. And they just had a remodel done. Because I know that because my son-in-law owns B and R Plumbing, they just did it.
Oh.
Mr. Daniels, we're now live on YouTube, just so you know.
Great, thank you.
Should I say B and R Plumbing again then?
Free advertisement, there you go. Hey Dawn, do we have any big items to vote on tonight or anything?
No.
So I've got a webinar thing that starts at seven.
Okay.
Would it be if I just? Sayonara early?
Yep, thank you.
I learned how to sayonara early from Connie, so.
Okay, we'll get going here to call the Planning Commission to order this Wednesday, February 17th, 2021. If, let's see, Ms. Karen, if you could call roll please.
Ryan Pearson.
Present.
James Guerrero.
Here.
Dawn Daniels.
Here.
Nancy Hudson-Eckles.
Here.
Connie Coleman-Lackerty.
Present.
Philip Combs.
Present.
Paul Wegeman.
Present.
You have quorum, Chair.
Thank you. Before us, we have the minutes of February 3rd, 2021, looking for a motion.
I'll move that the minutes be accepted as written.
Mr. Wegeman had a first, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Combs, thank you. So we have a first and second, any changes, comments to the minutes? Hearing or seeing none at this time, all those in favor by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Opposed, abstentions? Hearing none, minutes passed as written for the February 3rd, 2021. Any changes to our agenda tonight?
No, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. No request for changes by fellow commissioners? No, okay, great. At this time, we'll open up for public comment, period where, yep, Ms. Tiffany?
I apologize, Mr. Chair, I should have mentioned this. Tonight, you may well have, and it looks like you do have, some attendees from the Community Services Advisory Board. They are going to be here to hear the annual housing report that Mr. Buwer will be presenting a little later. But the idea during the city council's process of setting up the work plans for the various commissions and boards this year, there was discussion and a desire to improve the coordination between what Planning Commission does and what the Human Services focus is for Community Services Advisory Board, including affordable housing. So it looks like we do have a couple of them here with you tonight, and I don't know if they want to make any public comment, or if they'll want to ask questions once Mr. Buwer starts his presentation, but just to make you aware of that.
Great, thank you. So again, I will open up public comment at this time, and for those that are on YouTube or wishing to speak on any topic, this is the time. And so if you have anyone signed up, Ms. Tiffany at all, or?
I have not seen anyone request. Mr. Deveraux, do you have anybody who is saying they wanted to provide comment? Looks like she said I do not, okay.
Okay, all right. And hearing no other person at this time raising their hand or speaking up, we'll go ahead and close the public comment period at this time. Tonight, there's no public hearing, and we also have number seven, no unfinished business. So we're going to move right into number eight, new business. We'll start off with the annual housing report. And Ms. Spear, are you doing that, or Mr. Buwer?
Actually, it'll be Mr. Buwer tonight, and I believe he will be not only speaking, but sharing a presentation with you on screen.
Great, well, welcome, Mr. Buwer, and it's all yours.
Thank you. Just very briefly, the department prepares an annual housing report. It goes to the Planning Commission for its review, and then is scheduled before the City Council for their review. And it basically gives an overview of what's happened in the housing arena in the last year. And I will share my screen, and hopefully this will... Okay. Can everyone see that? Great. Well, this is just the intro slide, I'm going to move on to the next one. Again, at the beginning of each calendar year, we publish our annual housing reports. I just wanted to mention to the group that there is no specific code requirement that we do this. It's really published for informational purposes, and this goes back to 2000, 2001, when the city was in the process of changing the zoning in the Springbrook, excuse me, in the Woodbrook area where a significant amount of housing was removed, or pending for removal as a result of redevelopment. I also want to point out that the content of the report, oops. Here we go. The content of the report varies from year to year based on trends, market conditions, and changes in regulatory requirements. So what you see in 2020 will be different than what we published in 2019, although there are some basic pieces of material that we do share with the Commission Council. What's in this year's housing report? Most people are not aware of this, but HUD publishes a quarterly report on current housing conditions for the Tacoma-Lakewood area. The last report was in November 2020. So I went ahead and excerpted several sections of that report into this document. We also cover rents in Lakewood and surrounding communities. Again, this information is pulled from HUD documents as well as rent cafe. We also talk about Lakewood's housing production for 2020. What's new this year that this commission has not seen is we're doing a recap of the city's community development block grant and home housing programs for the next 18 months. Also new this year is a very brief synopsis of the city's rental housing and safety program, a recap of a report that was produced in 2020 called "The State of Affordable Housing in Pierce County", and what we expect to see for the remainder of 2021. I'd like to talk about some of the underlying economic conditions. Since 2015, a stronger rate of population growth in the metropolitan area has occurred because of the increase in net migration from King County. This has had a substantial impact upon our housing situation in this area, because the value of the houses are substantially lower in Pierce County than they are in King County, and you can get basically more money if you are better housed or better quality of life by relocating to Pierce County. I would also like to mention the impact of COVID-19, and that as a result of COVID-19, from what information we've been able to glean, there's been an overall decline of about 12,000 jobs. Now, that's old information based on November, and probably is slightly higher now. And the last point I would like to make is before the pandemic, 49% of employed Tacoma-Lakewood metropolitan area residents, or roughly 186,000 people, commuted outside of the county for work, for which approximately 72% commute to King County. Now, that's a substantial number, and that actually plays into the Energy and Climate Change Report that you will see a little bit later this evening. More on economic conditions, since 2015, again, you have a stronger rate of population growth coming out of King County. Oops. Sales and housing market conditions are currently very tight, with a vacancy rate of less than 1%, down from 2.6% in 2010. There's a shortage of housing, plus increased demand from King County residents has equated into stronger home sales.
Mr. Buwer, I don't think your slides moved forward. I'm sorry, I don't think your slides moved forward, Mr. Buwer.
He has the wrong screen shared. Because his slideshow isn't on this one. Like the full screen slideshow, sorry.
So if you just double-click on Slide 5, give that a try with your mouse.
I need to go back, how do I do that on this, you know?
The left arrow.
Yeah.
Left arrow? Okay, hold on. Here we go. I did want to state something about the foreclosure rates. We're currently estimating it at 3%. During the Great Recession, it was at 10%. We do believe this is rising, and you're going to see more of an increase in future months unless something takes place at the federal level to stabilize foreclosures and evictions.
Mr. Buwer, it's still on the same number four slide, it's not moving.
Mr. Chair, what are you seeing currently? What's the title of the slide?
The underlining economic conditions, number four.
Okay. Now, do you see more on economic conditions?
Yep, number five, correct.
Okay.
Mr. Buwer, if you click right on the icon next to the negative sign in the bottom right corner, just to the left of that negative sign. Just to the left down. You see how there's a plus and minus sign there?
No.
Just go left from where you're at, a little bit more, there's a plus sign right there, you see that?
Yeah.
Don't click on that, just the icon just to the left of the negative sign, we'll make it fullscreen. That one.
Okay, hold on.
Some reason it's not populating.
Try double-clicking on that icon that he was just talking about, the next one to the right, yeah, double-click that, next one, there.
I'm not getting anything.
In any event, we're on Slide 5, if you want to.
Okay. Anyway, I already talked about this a little bit, I'm going to move to Slide 6. It says, "Why do we have a shortage in housing production?", can you see that okay?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Here's a list of things that are going on. Improved access to credit where we have more consumers in a constrained market. Low interest rates, again, places more consumers in that same market. The impacts of net migration from King County over the past five years. The increasing land costs because of increasing demand and limited availability. Rising labor cost, rising materials cost, and I did put in here land use regulation at roughly 25%. But this is not just local zoning. You need to add in the State Growth Management Act, SEPA, the Shoreline Code, building codes, and what I call outside sewer and water utility regulations, either from Pierce County sewers or Public Works, or the Lakewood Water District. And coming down the line very soon will be climate change. So those are all having a net effect on available housing and the shortage. The other thing I would just like to point out, the biggest beneficiaries of regulatory barriers is really existing homeowners, because this is where you can increase one's wealth, and actually land use regulation helps maintain and stabilize, or in some cases, actually increase the value of one's property. The other thing I would like to share with the commission is government regulations are not the only problem. Housing production in this country is too complicated, and this slide attempts to show the housing development ecosystem between landowners, developers, home builders, property owners, single-family rentals, which are on the center section of the slide, and then you see these other factors located to the left and the right. Best way to improve housing production is to basically make the process simpler, shorter, and more transparent. And the state legislature's response so far has been slightly different, which is to increase residential densities. I would also like to state that in some ways, we have attempted to address this issue as simpler, shorter, and more transparent, when the city of Lakewood in December of 2019 completely rewrote its development code in an effort to do all those things. I'm not saying that we could not make improvements to it, but a big effort was made to try to improve the process by which permits are issued in the city of Lakewood. The next slide talks about rents. We currently have a 2.9 vacancy rate in the city of Lakewood. A healthier vacancy rate would be around 5% or 6%. Rent growth has averaged almost 6% annually from 2020, and during the most recent quarter, rents have averaged between basically $1,000 to $1,500, depending upon the number of units respectively in an apartment itself. You see two tables, the one on the right is apartments, and it shows you that the largest majority of rent ranges are between $1,000 and $1,500, which is roughly 58%, I believe. And then the occupied housing units. Now, there's a trend here that's interesting. The number of occupied rental housing units has decreased this past year because of the value of those houses has increased, and thus what was once renter occupied was placed on the market and sold. Those numbers last year used to be slightly different, where renter occupied and owner occupied houses were roughly 50/50. So that's been one significant shift in Lakewood. This shows apartment rents by community, Lakewood is in the center. You'll note that Seattle, the average rent is roughly $2,000, but the year-to-year change has been minus 10%. It also has one of the smaller square footages for apartments. What of this has to do with COVID-19, it may also reflect some of the disenfranchisement that some people have in Seattle towards their community at the moment, given some of the issues that you hear about fairly frequently on the news. Federal Way has had the lowest year-to-year change of 2%. On average, Lakewood is in the middle at roughly 6%, with a rate of around $1,300 average rent. The big change here is in Stanaway, where the rent has increased by 16% over the last year. And at this point in time, it may very well exceed Lakewood's average rent by 2021. This shows the amount of housing production in Lakewood, this is fairly typical on an annual basis. I would also note that accessory dwelling unit count says six, there were six permits received, three were canceled, so that number should actually say three, not six, so it's a little less than 167. Also note is the number of demolitions that take place. This again is fairly typical for Lakewood. Minus 32 single-family, and then the demolition of a triplex. So if you take the 167 and minus the demos, you're roughly about 126 net units for the year. Lakewood's growth rate has been roughly 0.5% for some time, and does not change that much. I'm also showing here platting activity, and this is referring to the number of new lots. Again, this number is fairly typical for Lakewood, and we create about 116 new lots. If development activity remains high, all of these will likely, or at least half of them, will be constructed by the end of 2021. Changing gears a little bit, this is the city's rental housing program. This shows you the number of registered units for the city for 2018, 2019, and 2020. We roughly have about 13,000 to 14,000 rental units per year. Our numbers are down, the numbers are down because of COVID-19 and the difficulty in performing inspections. Oftentimes renters did not want to spend their units for health and safety reasons. Other people chose to use the inspection, use the other reasons to defer or not allow inspections to take place. For the most part, we find minor violations in codes. When we do find them, we do require the property owner, the landlord, to make improvements. Overall, I... Yes.
Excuse me, one question, Mr. Buwer, is we noticed from 2018 to 2020, the amount of registered properties, is that because it's half, 50%, they're just not registering as much, or not paying for the registration, or? Is that?
It's a combination of factors. One, some of the landlords are having difficulty with their collecting rents, and many of them would like us to place the rental housing program on hold. The answer to that question has been no. The registration fee is only $5, excuse me, $1 a month per unit, or $12 per month per unit, which is the lowest anywhere in the Puget Sound. The other reason is COVID-19. Those are the two primary ones. It's been difficult to get people to register. I do see this trend occurring in 2021. Hopefully after COVID-19, things begin to pick up. I am expecting us to have a better number by 2022. Right now, it looks like a downward trend, but that's more a result of COVID-19 than anything else. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
I'm going to switch a little bit now and talk a little bit about our community development block grant program. You're going to see three slides. It's basically built out on a, from a July 1, 2020, to a June 30, 2021 schedule. And it's broken down into one, two, three, four, five different categories. We spend a considerable amount of money on major home repair. We set aside $500,000 for 10 single-family households. And generally speaking, a major home repair is running about $50,000 to $60,000 per unit. And with the new regulations for energy conservation, that's going to increase. We also do emergency assistance for displaced residents. We have a fund of $45,000, but I could spend as much as $100,000 a year on emergency assistance for displaced residents. It's a category that comes up frequently, given some of the ongoing housing conditions we have in some parts of the city. One project that we've been working on for years is a boat street property, which is to construct nine new single-family homes in Tillicum. This has been, this property was once a dilapidated, rundown mobile home park that created all kinds of problems for the city and the police department. There was an abatement done on it, and then there was another abatement adjacent to another property on Portland. Now both sites are vacant, and we are in the process of funding $600,000 to construct nine new single-family affordable housing units via Habitat. Similar to Habitat, there's another organization called Home Ownership of the Center of Tacoma. They're working on constructing two new single-family residences. We've placed aside $250,000. We have a tenant-based rental assistance program. This was funded in 2020 to the amount of $148,464. We provided 100 households with rental assistance. The signup period for that was only one week, the demand is very high. We're also working with LASSA to expand and acquire additional land contiguous to their existing facility. That's, so far, money has been set aside through the 2060 County Funds. They may be coming forward and asking for some assistance later. Five and six, we have a housing rehab project for two single families. And then we offer down payment assistance, usually about one or two houses a year. A new category this year has been the community development block grant, coronavirus one and three. And that shows you the amount of assistance that we have provided to individuals as a part of COVID-19. Honestly, this was very difficult to do, given our staffing situation. Required a tremendous level of coordination amongst various city departments. There were deadline dates, we did meet all of them, and I'm quite pleased with the outcome, but this was a very difficult program to administer and complete on time. NSP 1 and NSP 3 are funds that we acquired to the Great Recession, the National Stabilization Program. We use these funds to do abatement projects. These funds are a separate account, we use monies. Then when abatements are completed and our funds are collected, we go back and refurbish or repair that account, so it's a revolving fund. We can only use NSP 1 and NSP 3 in low-income neighborhoods. Just generally speaking, this is a very active year, and I would also say that in past, we were able to have almost $1 million in CDBT and home funds. Throughout the years, that's dwindled down to as low as about $570,000. In the last three or four years, it's been stabilized around $700,000. And with CDBT, CB1, and CB3, it's been actively increased. This is for the next cycle. Again, you see 10 single-family households. Emergency assistance is some of the same level of assistance that you've seen in previous years. What will happen as we get closer to this next cycle, we'll go back and refer this to the City Council and the CSAB for any kind of minor adjustments as programs move forward. And then this is the last cycle from 2022. And then this is the last cycle from 2022 to 2023. Again, some of this is ongoing, but it gives you an idea or an impression of the amount of work going on trying to improve neighborhoods using HUD funds. I did speak to this already, but in 2020, we did have local rental and market assistance. $621,000 was allocated in rental assistance with a partnership of LASSA. And then another $148,464 was allocated through the council for a tenant based rental assistance program. Again, the program opened up on December 4th and one week only and received more than 100 applications, totaling $200,000 in back rent due. The council just recently approved an amendment to this program. This week, you know, we have approximately $744,000 that we will be distributing beginning mid to late March in the area of tenant based rental assistance. So this, this continues to be a very active program. Thinking subjects again, I did excerpt out certain parts of the 2020 Pierce County Housing Report. They talked about three steps to improve housing, increasing the supply, maintaining and preserving affordable housing units, and regional coordination of affordable housing policies. I think we do a pretty good job of this already. The maintenance and preservation of affordable housing comes about through either rental housing or CDBT programs. We have attempted to increase the supply of affordable housing using HUD funds, although the amount of money is somewhat limited. And I know that we continue to work with various regional groups on, on affordable housing policies. Generally, I would tell you that I think that our affordable housing policies are fairly strong in relationship to other cities. And the following slide talks about that. Best practices for improving supply of affordable housing. One is inclusionary zoning. And if you see the little checkbox with the, with the X in it, we do have an inclusionary zoning program in place. It is voluntary. But if you are proposing inclusionary housing, you get all kinds of bonuses for increased density, reduction in parking, and 40% of your permit fees can be waived. That does not include the permit fees associated with outside agencies, however. The next one is making use of public land for affordable housing. We don't have any, so that's why you see sort of a minus in that category. The third one, establishing commercial linkage or impact fees to fund affordable housing development. And what this means, basically, if you are proposing, say for example, a 500,000 square foot industrial warehouse, then you would be required to pay an impact fee because of the impact that your project will have on housing in the community. We have not brought this forward, so there is no X in the box. And I put a little frowny face on this one because I think that if you do this, you're going to be in a situation which will have some economic consequences to the community because I don't believe any other community in Pierce County is looking at this commercial linkage at this time. Requiring mixed income housing development near transit. We're almost done with that, but that refers to the Lakewood Station District Subarea Plan, which you have been working on for the past year. Revising and or streamlining the development view and rezoning processes. We did that in December of 2019. We also have incentive zoning in place. Experimenting with new building types. Now I put a question mark and a hmm face on this one because I think we're open to it, but we have yet to see any proposals move forward. Second to the last, reviewing and revising parking requirements. We made revisions in 2019. And then the commission made a series of recommendations on parking as a part of the Lakewood Station Project. And promoting regional solutions. I know that Tiffany in particular regularly signs in and listens to some of the housing issues that are being discussed, not only within Pierce County, but also in the greater PSRC, Puget Sound Regional Council area. What to expect in 2021? A big one, what happens to the eviction moratorium come March 31, 2021? We don't know. Is it going to be extended or not? I keep hearing comments that the state is going to be providing additional assistance to proprietors and landlords. I do know that many renters have been contacting us and are extremely apprehensive about what's going to occur after that date. And we do not have an answer. Adoption of Lakewood Station District Subarea Plan, that's underway. Implementation of the 2021 Annual Action Plan, that was approved this week. Distribution of coronavirus rental assistance funds, that begins next month. The current housing construction rate will continue into 2021, although this year we'll likely see an increase in the number of multifamily units. Continuation of rental housing. Of interest to this commission and to the council will be the release of the Pierce County Buildable Lands Report in the fall of 2021. And that talks about density and how well has Lakewood complied with some of the requirements under GMA. Another big one in response to Puget Sound Regional Council's Vision 2050, Pierce County Council is to establish population allocations for all of Pierce County, including the cities. This is in the process of being studied. In the past, this gets to be pretty nasty politically with lots of people getting quite upset. And we have been assigned a preliminary population number, which is way outside our current historical growth patterns. We are sending a letter very soon to the Pierce County, to the consultant working on this project with Pierce County, indicating findings as to why our population number should not be set so high and set at a lower number at 68,000. Something that's going on off the side is the city may choose to formally join the South Sound Housing Affordability Partners, or SSHAP. This organization's been around for about a year now. And its purpose is locally elected officials, primarily the county execs and mayors from various cities in Pierce County, have been talking about how to improve the affordable housing situation in Lakewood. So that's something that the Lakewood City Council may wish to consider. And potentially, and I'm assuming this is going to happen, we have yet to see it, more federal COVID relief funding coming down the pipe. Exactly what this looks like in the, in the event of relocation assistance and the like is unknown, but it's something that we are looking at. So that concludes this report or this PowerPoint. Let me, give me just a moment, please.
I'll ask at this time, is any questions for Mr. Bueller in relation to what he just presented to us? Any questions? I don't see any hands. Okay. Did Mr. Commissioner Combs, did you have a question? Or right here?
I, I, I think it's fascinating. I was curious, I saw the, I heard you talk about the at risk and the foreclosures. And before we get to foreclosures, there's typically what they will consider at risk of foreclosure category. And have you seen, do you see those numbers for Lakewood? Do you, have you, do you have access to any of that information?
I do not have access to that information. What information I have gleaned is from HUD reports, which is, when we start getting climbing up to 8%, we're going to have hard times in this community. We're at 3%. And so that's something that we are monitoring and will continue to monitor. Usually it's in the 1% to 2% range. Not too bad yet, but the further this, this COVID process continues, the inability for people to maintain their jobs, the worse it gets.
Well, it'd be interesting to monitor. The scarcity of housing in our areas kept the rates up so high. And I, I think you heard me mention that last week. And the more we can encourage building, the more likely we are to keep that cost down for, for our residents here and, and make it more affordable. I, I love to see, I love to see that we've got a pretty good rental base there. I noticed under the options for build it or for how do we improve our affordable housing? And I don't know enough about this. I don't have the history behind it like you do. Do we have any public, private opportunities that we've pursued to create more, more housing?
We're working on one right now called the Lakewood Landing. And that is a project that's being proposed along Pacific Highway. You've seen a little bit of that with the Lakewood Station District Subarea Plan. And there we have a situation with multiple partners who own different sets of properties. It's been, it's going to be a challenge to get everybody to agree. We're not there yet, but there is interest. Another piece or another example of a, of a partnership of, of late has been one with a longstanding property owner in Lakeview area that's been assembling property for the last 20 years. And he has assembled eight acres of land.
Wow.
And he is very interested in moving forward with affordable housing. He's in the process of demolishing the Shannon apartment that will add to his list of properties. But that is one partnership that the city of Lakewood is very interested in. We have used the multifamily tax exemption program in Lakewood. I would call that something of a partnership, although nobody has used the affordable housing component. Everyone just wants to use the market rate, which is, reduces property taxes for a period of eight years. At some point, the council may want to consider that if you want to use multifamily tax exemption, that you have to include an affordability component. And that continues to be a point of discussion in the legislature. I do not believe they're going to do that this year. They're going to provide for extended periods of housing affordability or reductions in property taxes for well beyond 12 years. So that will be interesting to see if it gets adopted. So, and that existing tax exemption programs can take advantage of it.
That's interesting. I, I like, I like the idea. Anytime where you can get the public and private engaged, you know, whether it's, I mean, when it comes to difficult problems, you kind of have to put more heads together. And I think that that's good that you're talking on a project already. I love that, you know, the housing incentive for the tax abatement period for property taxes, I think that's, that's a have to today, especially in our region. And, and maybe if you're looking at making mandatory, I believe in that carrot versus the stick approach because I feel like you're more likely to get developers to respond to a carrot than you are to a stick. Because if we're not getting a mention here already, taking a stick to them is hard. But I, I think if, if you do adopt something like that, maybe we have a tiered approach where, you know, I've seen something in Seattle where you have something at this level, you get this abatement. At this level, you get an increased incentive. And maybe you can get some King County assistance from this level and kind of have a tiered approach that really helps kind of draw people in as the best place to build. Although I know we're not there right now. I am looking way down the road, but I, I would be open to something like that. And I, I love to hear that you guys are creative on it already.
Great.
I would also tell you that we use the abatement process to, to take care of abandoned properties. We remove buildings. We remove all problems that there might be on the site. So that property is clean. When a person comes in to purchase it, there are no underlying situations. We're also working on a program that's coming back to the council late March on existing contaminated properties and trying to get the current number of owners with contaminated properties to clean them up so that we are dealing with these longstanding issues once and for all. We currently have two building permits held up because the property owners did not move forward to clean them up. So they're frustrated with us, but in the long term, this takes care of a lot of issues on infill sites. And that's not fair too, to the other property owners who have cleaned their properties and have done what they're supposed to do. So I think there's about, I don't remember the number off the top of my head. I want to say less than 60, but those are the ones in which the city council and the city managers ask us to focus on.
Okay, good, Mr. Bueller. Thank you. So we got some, moving on to the next proposed 2021 Comprehensive Plan Energy and Climate Change Chapter.
And I'll just say, Mr. Chair, very quickly, this is, if you were to look at the entire 2021 Comprehensive Plan docket list that the council approved in December after you reviewed it, this is the very first amendment that was on that list, that was to create a, a new chapter for the city's comprehensive plan. And so Mr. Bueller is going to walk through the draft version that he's prepared in conjunction with consultants. And then just as a heads up, at your next meeting, we will be continuing through the rest of the docket amendments. But for tonight, we're just going to focus on this one.
Great, thank you.
Can you see that table of contents? Can you see that? Draft Energy and Climate Change Chapter.
No.
You need to hit share screen.
Okay, there we go.
You ready?
Yes.
Says purpose?
Yep.
A, a couple of things before I get into this. Hold on. Do you see table of contents?
Yes.
Okay, this is where I want to start. This is the, the general layout for the Energy and Climate Change Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan. And you'll notice that certain areas have been stricken out from discussion for this evening. And those include potential impacts of climate change to the Pacific Northwest and Pierce County. And we're not talking about carbon sequestration, key findings, and recommendations, goals and policies, and implementation, and end notes. Basically, those areas, particularly 12, 13, and 14, are going through another review process. There's a lot of information here. So my desire is to just focus in on the basic topics themselves. And you'll, this is coming back to you in more detail in future meetings. Mr. Chair, do you see purpose?
Yes.
Okay. So there's five purposes. To describe the climate change impacts, to highlight key findings and recommendations, to find goals for energy and climate change, identify policies and implementing tasks, and provide a summary table identifying need responsibilities for each implementing task. There's also a section on impacts from COVID-19. And what this is basically saying is that in the Puget Sound region, greenhouse gas emissions fell roughly 10% to 30%, although this number needs to be refined and there's need for further study. Washington State is reporting a highway traffic and I-5 is down by 17%. Pierce Transit has seen a reduction in ridership by as much as 70%. And lastly, this is a big one. Teleworking is likely going to be the new norm with potentially dramatic reductions in vehicle miles traveled. And this is something that will require further study but has significant impact on the ability of Puget Sound cities to reduce their greenhouse gas emissions. And you'll see this a little bit further in this report. I'm not going to read all of this, but I just wanted to list all the climate change impacts that are coming forward in Washington. Basically, a sea level rise, flows of water in rivers and streams increasing during late winter and early spring, warmer winters. warmer winters, warmer water and lower flows would threaten salmon, steelhead, and trout. And this is happening now in the Squali Delta. The Nisqually Indian Tribal Council, along with the South Town Militaries Community Partnership, has done some significant work in looking at the biological impacts of specifically climate change and I-5 on fish populations. This is a fairly serious issue. It has been reported to the legislature. They're looking at doing some additional funding to further study, basically removing I-5 in its current location and building a new I-5 across the delta on something of a large bridge. Likely less hydroelectric power, potential for more forest fires. And number eight, this is kind of interesting and something you might want to watch. The overall impacts of climate change in Washington State are significantly less than other parts of the country. And it suggests that that the state over time could experience unforeseen increases in population growth. That's just supposition, but something that you may want to pay attention to and could be a driving force behind some of the population projections you could be seeing in the future. The specific climate change impacts to Lakewood, you're going to see changes in weather patterns, water levels that could influence the Chambers Creek Dam where it overtops, areas with steep slopes, which we don't have very many, but if you had heavy rainfall, you could see some potential for some increased landslide. And in in development projects that were approved back in the county days, there was a lot of discussion on potential landslides for those residential properties adjacent to the creek. Right now, it seems to be okay, but that could be an area of some instability in the future. Number four is significant. The changes that have been made to the city's flood control regulations indicates that now portions of the floodwaters are in the 100-year floodplain. And you could see impacts on flooding on I-5 between Highway 512 and Bridgeport Way. This is new information, and it's something that the city and Washdod are monitoring. Number five, and this is another significant one, as the storms kind of change and you'll see higher summer temperatures, your water quality in the city's numerous lakes and streams will worsen. It's also impacted by the shallowness of some of the lakes, which is talked about in the document. And something that's kind of occurring off to the side is potential for fires in Fort Silicon Park and in open space areas behind Western State Hospital and JBLM lands adjacent to city limits. We have begun seeing people submit applications for new water wells in some of these areas and more of these established residential areas in an attempt to irrigate some of the forested areas to prevent forest fires in these neighborhoods. And I was surprised to see that, that we do now have some applications pending for water wells in the Oak Brook neighborhood adjacent to the creek, Chambers Creek. This is something different that a lot of cities haven't done, but we do have some climate change advantages that I thought were worth noting. We have a moderate climate. Our access to hydroelectric power is very good. Two of the three power companies serve Lakewood. We see the majority of their power from hydroelectric plants. There is infill potential that still remains in Lakewood. Transportation, we do have fairly good access with Pierce Transit and Sound Transit. And we do have two transit stations and two parking rides in the city. And again, we have recently revised land use regulations, I did mention that. We wrote HNA, adopted the downtown subarea plan. And a second subarea plan is up for preparation and review by the city council soon. Other things, we do have a non-motorized transportation plan that promotes walkability, sidewalks, curb stutters, and bicycles. We have an adopted streets, complete streets policy. We've installed LED lighting in all of our streetlights and all traffic signals. We have fairly significant open space protections. We have tree preservation, and there's a move by some in the community to actually enhance or provide for greater tree preservation, and that needs to be studied and reviewed very carefully. Floodplain protections, we have updated our floodplain regulations and created an overlay zone. We also have a shoreline master program that restricts development areas adjacent to water bodies, streams, and wetlands. And we have an active hazards mitigation plan, which is put together by the police department and the West Pierce Fire District. And it's in the process. Once this climate change document is approved, it would be updated to address some of the issues that are discussed in this this proposal. We have challenges. One, Lakewood is a relatively new city, and so climate change hasn't been a priority. But as we've matured, it's becoming more so. A big one is our older housing stock. And much of the housing stock does not, is not very good when it comes to energy conservation. Another problem is the state's adoption of new energy conservation code, which was effective the very beginning of this month. Both myself and the building official are quite concerned because this is going to slow remodels in addition to existing older housing. Also places the city in a very uncomfortable position where I think we're going to see a lot of bootleg additions as people try to get around the energy conservation requirements. I don't want the city staff to be the ones out speaking with homeowners on noncompliance with these issues. This is going to be very uncomfortable for for city staff, and we're trying to use some common sense as to how we go about this. But the biggest problem I see is the city exact, excuse me, the state exacted these new requirements and did not provide enough incentives to make this as difficult as it might be for some property owners in the future. Another big one, and this is one for a lot of cities, major changes in energy infrastructure. The conversion to green technology currently is more expensive than current systems. And if it's going to be that way, it's going to be more difficult to resolve some of our climate change challenges. A good example of this, it's not talked about in the current draft document, but it is coming forward in further revision, is there's a desire or a move afoot to get rid of natural gas as a energy source for homes and buildings and businesses. PSE has made significant expenditure in funds on their drifting gas systems. Gas systems are used frequently in industrial settings. This has significant economic impacts. This is a point of of discussion that I believe the council and the commission is going to have. Do not have an answer right now, but it's something that I would like to make you aware of. Number four, this has to do with commuting. You can see that 21% commute to Tacoma, 19% to Seattle Metro. Carpooling is not used very much, nor is public transit. And this gets to be more of an issue a little bit later in this report. Number five, lack of a street network or a grid system. Usually, these types of systems promote walkability, bicycle transit, and stuff like that. We don't have very much of a grid system in Lakewood, except in the small areas of the city, some parts of the downtown, some areas over far west, and also in Silicon. Number six, our underlying land use patterns, i.e. Quaylet to Crazy Quilt. A lot of it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Roads and street systems are based upon old trails. A good example is Custer Road. Custer Road was actually built based upon the location of a trolley system. So a lot of the land use and grid network systems are something that we're just having to work with. Number seven, we currently lack a bus rapid transit system. That's something the city would like to see from downtown Tacoma to South Tacoma Way. And Sound Transit commuter rail service is fairly limited. And the big one, number eight, Lakewood is not a full-service city. We do not have control over our utilities. We are at the whims of others, and that makes it very difficult to talk about climate change. And I will talk a little bit more about this on some other slides. This is our utility fuel mix for 2018. And if you look at it, you'll see if you go down to hydro, Lakeview Light Power, 86% of their energy is hydroelectric. Puget Sound energy is 22%, and Tacoma Power is 85%. Now, a lot of PSE's electricity is generated by coal plants or natural gas. And there is current laws and regulations in place where Puget Sound energy is supposed to convert to all renewable energy by the year 2035. This also gives you an account of how much energy is produced. The next iteration of this report will also provide a little bit more historic information rather than 2018. But you will see that some of the power companies are beginning to convert more and more to renewable sources. This is a map that shows the bifurcated nature of utility lines in Lakewood. The area in purple is Tacoma Power. The area in green is PSE. The area in yellow is Lakeview. And the area in orange is an area that's disputed between PSE and Lakeview. So you have a lot of different power purveyors with their own sets of rules and regulations and their own pricing structures. Again, this, when we start talking about energy and renewable sources, this really complicates how the city of Lakewood is going to address climate change. This one is our emissions based on a 2015 analysis. And you'll note that the most of it is on-road vehicles, which is transportation, 164,000 metric tons. Other categories that are high are of the industrial nature, then residential, and the commercial built environment. And then you have very small percentages in other areas. I want to talk very briefly about RCW 70A 45020. This law was amended last year, and it is currently, this is what it says. The state is to reduce its greenhouse gas emissions to 1990 levels by 2020. Well, that didn't happen. And then the next milestone is we drew, reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 45% below 1990 by 2030. And then by 2040, 70%. And then finally, we're to get to 95% by 2050. If I start applying this to Lakewood, I'm having to estimate our current, our greenhouse gas emissions at 385,000 tons in 1990, but this is what it looks like. These numbers are, will make you pay attention because I don't think they're realistic. I think they're aggressive and very unlikely that Lakewood would meet these targets. The means to reduce greenhouse gas emissions is through cooperative agreements with utility providers, which I think might be difficult. Tighten sustainability regulations, which I think we've worked on. Promoting intermodal and public transportation, community education and outreach, the introduction of electric vehicles and hybrids into the city's fleet system, energy conservation, and efforts to enhance carbon seeking. Now, there's other ways to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, but I think these are beyond Lakewood's legislative authority. One is the conversion of PSE electric power to renewable energy, a dramatic reduction in vehicle miles driven. Some of that could take place as a result of COVID-19 and future desires to almost require businesses of a certain size to continue to use virtual means to produce work. And lastly, the conversion of internal combustion vehicles to electric energy vehicles. You're seeing major announcements by large car companies indicating that they plan to make the switch. But I'd also like to point out, to make the switch on all of our existing homes, we're going to have to make major changes in our electrical systems to provide for electric vehicles as we want to try to provide power to them. And some of the older homes, not only are you going to have to make that addition, but you're also going to have to maybe change your, 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 your electric system in your house. So this is another potential infrastructure issue that has not been discussed in great detail. The other issue here is, right now, I can only think of four locations where you can take your car and and get the batteries stored up. And they're here at City Hall, not far from this building. But there needs to be a significant increase in the number of stations for EV-powered vehicles to power up during the day or evenings. This is also a concern in apartment complexes because none of them have these facilities currently. So again, there's a major infrastructure investment that is yet to be made. What's not covered in this presentation, I just wanted to mention, we're not going through carbon sequestration, findings and recommendations, goals and objectives, and implementation measures. And the reason is, of those four areas, three of them are still under review. We have, I have asked for a peer review by an outside group to like, take a look at our document. We are continuing to adjust findings, recommendations, goals, objectives, and implementation measures. You are going to see that continue. We are looking at having our final edits and a final draft document due to the end of this month. I will also point out that the state legislature is in session, and they likewise are discussing the contents of future local energy climate change chapters. And much of what we are proposing now will likely have to be amended at a future date. However, I would say that as a community, we are far ahead of the curve and will have less issues. And it's placing us in a good position to get additional grants by having this chapter done. I do also expect major changes to the implementation measures, and this will be an ongoing process throughout the remainder of 2021. We are certainly going to wrestle with a number of matters that come to my mind is the infrastructure issues surrounding the conversion to green technology and also what happens with natural gas. So those are some things I would like to bring to the commission's attention. Hold on just a second while I find where I'm at. And Chair, I return it back to you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Buwer. Do fellow commissioners have any questions for Mr. Buwer on this topic? We don't see, Mr. Guerrero, go ahead.
Thank you. So this is actually a subject that I'm very interested in. I've been studying a lot over the last couple of years, and I've really been focusing on climate change, but then also, of course, what it what it means to building science and that type of thing. So what I would say is that if you, in in my research, it really is a, we have a problem coming. Although we don't really see it very well right now, it is coming. And so I'm really happy to see that Lakewood is taking a, a really a proactive approach on the, on the policy side to try and get ahead of it. Although I would differ with with Mr. Buwer a little bit in that I think we have to get to net zero by 2050. And so if, if, I think it will become more and more evident to more of the population that this is a real issue we have to deal with. And I think there will be more energy behind the policy changes. And I know it's really hard now because people just can't see it super well, but it, but it really is coming. So related to, so there were a couple of specifics in the, this draft, but I, I think maybe I could just talk about Dave, talk about it with with Dave separately because they're more kind of minutia-type things. But one idea that was mentioned in here is that buildings could or should possibly be a LEED standard. And what I'd suggest is that a LEED standard is great, but there's, there's a whole bunch of other organizations that have parameters around energy-efficient buildings, and LEED is just one of them. So for example, Living Futures is a very strong. So for example, Living Futures is a very strong system of meeting kind of overall building energy efficiencies. Fies House is another one. So if we're going to write actual policy that includes the specifics, I'd say let's get, let's get as many of the high, the high-performing ones as we can within our, within our documents, so.
I don't disagree, Mr. Guerrero. I would also state that if, if the state government thinks that local governments are going to be able to address this, that's a significant error on their part. There's a lot of work that needs to be done at the state level. My, my analysis of just this document, for us to get to the next level, the city council would have to probably spend $500,000 on various studies and other documents to bring forward these policies. And I shared that number with Department of Commerce, and you add that all the hundreds of cities that are in Washington, that's a big number. And I don't think that the state fully recognizes that how we're going to get to that number of, by 2050 without some major, major changes. And I also mean some major social changes in how we do things. Also concerned with the fact that maybe Washington is taking the lead and other people want to come here. And is that going to exacerbate the situation? That's another concern. I think this is something where all of the states need to get together, but we're not there. And Mr. Guerrero is right. This whole process is very gradual. You're not seeing it before your eyes because it's so, so small, but then all of a sudden it builds. Perhaps you might have some interest in this, that we can provide you the copy of the Nisqually Report on the Nisqually Delta. It's a real eye-opener. And it was shocking for everyone who read it or viewed the slides. And it's very complex, but basically what it boils down to, if I can explain it very briefly, salmon need a period of time for their kidneys to convert from fresh water to saltwater. And there used to be about a half-mile swath of the delta that was used by the salmon to make that adjustment. Well, because of climate change and the water issues that are going on up the mountain, combine that with I-5, which acts as a dam, that area is getting smaller and smaller and smaller. And so one begins to wonder at what point are the salmon no longer able to make that conversion? And then the implications to that are dramatic for the entire Puget Sound. It's unfortunate that it's not understood and it's not studied enough. And like I say, this took a lot of work to get to this point, and it was a real eye-opener for, for members of SSMCT. And we're hoping that the legislature sees that. But to fix I-5 through that area is a four and a half billion dollar project. So that's the cost of climate change.
Yeah. Any other questions, Mr. Wegeman? Go right ahead.
Yeah. You know, we're just looking down in Texas right now. You know, they've made a big movement to generate power via the windmill. And all their, many of their windmills, because of the cold weather, they didn't look at the whole situation, so they have no power. I talked to one of my friends that lives right there in Dallas. And, you know, so they, they lost power, it got so cold. So there, there's no chance of power. They, they, all their pipes in their house froze, so now their house is flooded. It's, it really turned into a mess. So please don't get my comments to be that I'm anti-this. I'm just saying, hey, I think we need to think through some of these things before we go full speed ahead. You know, sometimes there, there needs to be some compromise as we look at that. Again, you know, I, I come from flying off the front end of aircraft carriers. Again, that's pretty high risk. But, you know, if you don't think about some of those things, you might find yourself in the water or dead, one of those two. And so I, I hope as we go through this, that we, that we put our heads together and cautiously move forward.
Yep, great. Mr. Collins, you have a question?
Well, I was just going to comment on the, the policy, you know, that the state's mandated for 2050, and I've read through that. I, I told Mr. Buwer that, and I'm probably, probably the only nerd here who cares enough to read that story before it comes out. But it's a very long, long document, and it does not offer a lot of solutions on how we get there. It just says what the goal is. And my concern with it is that it, without solutions, we are just creating more problems. And so I agree with the idea. In fact, I, I'm, worked on a living building up in Seattle. I, I'm maybe the only one on, on the, in the group here that's been through these living buildings where they all shoot for net zero. And I've worked on maybe the biggest one in Seattle right now, and it just opened up. It's not one that will be economically feasible for most properties, and even in Seattle. And so to try and approach that here, it's, it's a daunting task, and I don't think we're prepared for it. I agree that it's something we need to address. And I don't think, James and I don't think anyone disagrees with the reality of, you know, the changing climate and the issues that are, are there. It's just a matter of what's the right approach and trying to get the right-sized hammer for the nail, so to speak. And I don't think that this city or this region can handle this, this kind of approach. I, I think it's going to discourage development. And I, I constantly weigh out the economics of these things, but when you look at, do we want to have affordable housing, which we just talked about? Or do we want to have a net zero? I think we have to be very mindful of which thing we want most because they don't go hand in hand in this case.
Yeah.
If you add $30,000 to a new house and your construction costs are $100 a square foot, that's going to eat into the new developers. And, and only the people who own their own businesses that are well-to-do will be able to manage that. And that's, that's not the population that we're most concerned about. It's the people who are seeking affordable housing. So this, this, there has to be a good balance. And I guess my, my, my hope and, and Mr. Buwer would be that we push, push back a little bit and put it on the state to give us some more ideas on how we're really going to accomplish this. And I, I don't see it as a practical solution right now. I, I think it's an idealistic approach. It's not that I'm anti it. Trust me, no one wants to see it succeed more because we've already done it. But I just don't see the economics, especially in this region. I did have one question though for Mr. Buwer, and that was related to the utilities. I really didn't realize that we were so fragmented in our supply. And I was curious, in all the research and studies you've done, do we, do we have an opportunity, you know, and I know this isn't a one or five-year deal, it's like a 10, 20-year deal, but could we at some point take, you know, create Lakewood utilities and start pulling these in so that we can, one, help solve the problem, which we're talking about, and two, start having better control over where, where our service people want to go after?
Let me answer that two ways. First of all, the previous city councils, the Huntington Corporation tried that. They tried to buy out all of the utility companies to create a Lakewood utility. The, the number was so high to buy the infrastructure that the city council failed to move it forward. So the answer to that approach is no. But there is something out there that's floating around, that's done in the Northeast, and I'm not sure it's allowed in, in Washington State. But basically, the city of Lakewood goes on the energy market and buys energy. And it could buy just, for example, all renewable energy. And then it could offer it up to residents and businesses. So we create a utility company, and we are basically wheeling power. That doesn't mean that we purchase PSE's pipes and meters and everything else. You would still pay for the use of that on a separate bill, but the power itself would be something that the city of Lakewood is producing or acquiring on behalf of its residents. Now, you create a utility company to do that, so that's a major shift in how we do business in Lakewood. That's how you would also get PSE to move faster to create renewable energy. That's how you get to the point where you're able to get to maybe 90% by the year 2050. But that's a huge investment on the part of the city. I'm not sure the legislation is in, in place to do this. And I think some power companies would be frightened with, if Lakewood did this, who else is going to do it? And what happens when you have all these different cities or counties providing power that are potentially less than what you're paying for, through your bills currently with PSE Tacoma Power or Lakeview Light Power? Because you could potentially be offering a lesser power. But you will be able to say, we've converted entirely to hydroelectric or renewable sources based upon the contract that you enter into. That's an option. I didn't put it in the report because I thought it was too far out there, that, that I would probably get whipped around a little bit. But, you know, if that's something that the commission wants to do, we can talk about that a little bit more. But at least for tonight, I wanted to just let your whistle on what's coming down the pipe to start thinking about this.
Well, I think that's awesome, and I think if you don't dream big, they'll never happen. So you got to start throwing all those crazy ideas on the wall until something sticks.
Great. Mr. Guerrero, you had another question?
Well, well, there were a couple of things. Related, well, I don't want to make it a kind of a discussion on windmills, but the issue with Texas, the windmills were stopped, stopping work, but just the idea of windmills are solar, they're, they're intermittent sources. And so you, as an electric use, you wouldn't rely on those as a, as your long-term basis. They provide kind of fluctuating use. And so in Texas, what happened was the windmill stopped working and their coal and their natural gas stopped working. And so basically, everything went, went kaput. And really, the windmills, I know it's getting headlines, and it's kind of an unfair comparison because it's really, the utilities wouldn't have relied on windmills to provide majority source. So I was going to, I was going to tell Philip, I actually asked Dave that question about the electric companies about eight years ago and got the same answer, although I really, I love, I love the idea of, of a utility saying it's going to be green-sourced and then kind of forcing the local utility to follow suit. I think if, if there's impetus behind that, I'm all for it. And one last comment I have is Tacoma Power about four years ago ran a community solar project where they sold shares in, in solar panel that they put on top of their own building in Tacoma. And I participated in it because my business is in Tacoma Power area. And it was a, it was a great project, very successful. So if you look up Tacoma Community Power, you can see the, the facility, it's up and running. It was actually surprisingly profitable, which I wasn't actually even doing it to, I was doing it to support this thing, and it actually ended up paying, paying back quite a bit better than what went into it. So I would, I would love to see if there's interest in Lakewood behind something like that. I would certainly get behind something like that, too, so.
Great. Miss Spear, or, oh, Mr. Buwer, go ahead.
Please let Tiffany go first.
Okay, Ms. Spear.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to inform the group that in addition to the state legislative discussion that's ongoing, as a matter of fact, today, the Pierce County Council also had a discussion about its Sustainability 2030 Plan. And it was laid out for one of the council's committees about the 10 priorities over the next 10 or nine years now, what the county wants to be putting in place, not only for itself, but for the cities, for sustainability and dealing with greenhouse gas emissions reductions. So there's going to be multiple levels of government, federal, state, and regional, influencing what the city does. And so, again, being proactive and trying to put something in place now, I think, is of advantage. And also being ready to respond to those things that come at the city by county and, and state direction is a good thing, being ready for that. Thanks.
Great. Mr. Buwer?
Just one more thing, Mr. Collins touched upon this about systems from the state of Washington as we move forward. I really do think when this whole grant process was started, which was last year, they offered up $200,000, $20,000 grants for a variety of communities. Lakewood was fortunate to get one. But I really do think this is an effort on the part of the state to use this, use us as guinea pigs to see what, what comes forward and how it works or doesn't. And I think that's going to have some major implications for Department of Commerce as it moves forward. So I think, you know, what we're doing here potentially has significant effects throughout the rest of the state, so.
Great, thank you, Mr. Buwer. Any other questions related to this topic from anyone else? I don't see anyone else. Thank you, Mr. Buwer, for that informative information. It's more to come, as they say. Okay, we'll move along on the agenda. Any reports, additional reports from staff?
Just a note for the next couple of meetings, there will not be a meeting on March 3rd, so your next meeting will be a month from now on March 17th. So wear your green or orange, as it were, if you're not Irish. And then we will be, as I said before, continuing the discussion of the 2021 Comprehensive Plan Amendment, various amendments. And then you'll be moving into the public hearing process for those to then go on to council. The other thing that's coming at you in the near future is the next six-year Transportation Improvement Program, so 2022, I'm sorry, 2022 to 2027. That plan will be in front of you in the near future. And then beyond that, we'll be getting into annual development regulations. But for the near future, short near future, we'll be talking Plan Amendments. Thanks.
Great. Any reports via our commissioners? Seeing none. Before we adjourn, I do want to wish Ms. Nancy Hudson-Echols all sincerity. Thank you for your volunteering and all of your diligent work on the commission. This is her last meeting, and so we wish you well in the future.
Thank you.
Yep, and so, yeah, we do wish you well. So thank you again for all of your time commitments that, to bring to the citizens of Lakewood, and we will miss you, no question about it.
Thank you. And I'll be going back and forth, so I will be peeking in on your meetings.
Okay, good. I like a little critique every once in a while. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Mr. Wegeman, do you have a question?
I was just waving goodbye.
Okay, great, no problem. Thank you again. No, last minute, no other comments hearing or seeing? Or Ms. Connie? Yeah, nothing? Oh, just goodbye? Okay, goodbye. All right, we'll call the meeting adjourned. Thank you so much.